Good evening, I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to ord- that clock is wrong, we're on world time, Mr. Woodside. So, we are, uh, we're convening the meeting of the Cartersville City Council. Sam is ahead of all of us tonight, so please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Let us pray. Gracious Father, we ask you continue your providential care for us. We gather this evening to embrace Calvin as a member of this council. Guide the work of this council that this city will be known for justice and peace. All for your honor and glory. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God and God have, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This over the roll, please.
Carrie Hahn, Ward 1.
Here.
Jane Step, Ward 2.
Here.
Louis Tomsmeier, Ward 3.
Here.
Lindsay McDaniel, Ward 4. Diane Tate, Ward 5.
Here.
Taff Rin, Ward 6.
Thank you, Meredith, and of course, uh, tonight is the effective resignation of our friend Lindsay McDaniel, who served with council with distinction and honor, and submitted his resignation effective, uh, on this day. And, uh, Lindsay's doing fine, spoke with him earlier in the week, was unable to be here tonight, but we look to honor him, uh, at a later date. But, uh, tonight, uh, we, as council went through the process, we are honored to welcome Calvin Cooley as the next city council member from Ward 4. So, I'll call on our city clerk, Meredith Omer, to do the swearing-in of soon-to-be councilman Calvin Cooley. If you'll step forward, please.
Are you sure Calvin, may I raise my hand, please? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and state of Georgia, that you will in all respect observe the provisions of the Charter and order the city of Cartersville, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties and jobs of the city of Cartersville as city councilmember, Lord God.
I do.
Thank you very much.
Y'all behave.
Good luck, son. Feel free to bop either one of them on the head.
That's right.
Anytime you want to.
That's right.
Calvin, I'll thank you first for bringing a level of distinction to that side of the table.
It has been missing since Lindsay had been here.
But, but other than that, let me reiterate, you've got a long history in our community of, of being a, a community leader, and then serving in a number of capacities, and making this place a, a better place to be. And, uh, we look forward to working with you and continuing that endeavor for you and for all of us. So, thank you and welcome.
Thank you. And I appreciate the opportunity, and the, uh, welcoming has been overwhelming, and the tutoring and help. So far, it's been very good. So, now, I'm gonna just listen, look, and honor you.
Very good. Thank you and welcome again. So, let's get on with the council, uh, business of the evening. We have got the approval of our meeting minutes from May 18th for council, uh, to make any corrections, or, uh, or any additions or deletions, or make motions.
Mayor, there was just one minor correction, and Meredith and I have already talked about it. And so, with that correction, make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. We have a couple second reading of ordinances, Mr. Sanders, if you'll get us started with that.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, council members. This ordinance revision revises the prohibited truck traffic ordinance, and, uh, we're adding five streets. Uh, most of these have been, uh, the signs have been up for some time for various reasons, but, uh, ordinance wasn't revised, so, uh, there's been no changes since the first reading.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or discussion? If there's none, a motion would be in order. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Tommy.
This, uh, this is also a second reading of the, uh, prohibited, it's adding the prohibited engine brake, uh, section to the traffic schedules, uh, for, um, a certain section of, um, State Route 61, basically from Addaway Drive to West Main Street. And, um, this is also the, uh, no changes since the first reading.
Okay. Any questions or discussion, and if not, a motion. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tommy. Mr. Porter, you have the next few.
Yes, Mayor, the first one is amendment to the permit fee ordinance. It's as part of the budget process. Uh, we looked at the permit fee structure we currently have in place. Before you, basically, we looked at the residential and commercial permit fee structure we have. Uh, it hasn't been changed since 2005. What is being recommended is a fee structure that is within the ordinance. It basically has the international code council rate for residential multiplied by the residential heated square footage, multiplied by a factor of .0035. And on the commercial side, that's using the average commercial rate under the ICC code, multiplied by a commercial building square footage, multiplied by .003. As was mentioned by the city attorney, that rate structure, kind of, you look at every year, maybe, some organizations or entities look at the, the rate structure based on the department operating costs. Uh, the planning and development department is about a million dollar budget. This is, will only generate a little over 200,000 overall, I think is what's we budgeted, uh, for the permit fee structure. So, we're still way below what we're currently, there's some organizations that obviously they can generate, I believe what Mr. Lovell had said, uh, a little bit more in, in addition to their expense side, but, uh, we're currently still gonna be under that even with this, uh, proposed rate ordinance change.
Okay.
We've got the comparables up now for you.
That's, yes, this comparables, those in your, uh, handout. It's showing you where we're at on the commercial fee, permit fee structure with Cherokee County. If you look at it with the impact fees, they would be the highest at, uh, forty-six thousand nine hundred something dollars. And we're, even with our rate structure being proposed, you see we're at the bottom, we're below Bartow County, and they are looking at their rate structure as well. But on this, uh, commercial example, it would go from, uh, you know, six, six thousand one hundred forty-seven dollars to eighteen thousand three thirty-nine, which still puts us way below several other organizations on the commercial side. And on the residential side, you still see where we're just slightly above Bartow County currently. Where proposed is going up a few hundred dollars on a residential permit fee structure at the twenty-five-hundred square foot house.
And as was discussed in the work session, this one example shows that amount of an increase, but based on what category project would fall into, some of, some of the permits would be even less expensive, and some wouldn't see a dramatic increase. This particular example has a, I think you'd say a dramatic increase, is tripling the cost. But, uh, that wouldn't be across the board for every project that, that came to the city.
It, it, correct. Most of them I would have looked at have gone up. Some obviously more than others, but it's based on, currently it's based on evaluation that the developer rings in, say this building gonna be valued for X. I did go back, uh, after the work session, look at Chalk Rate Center. I don't know what the building valuation was, but they paid approximately thirty-five thousand dollars to the city on their current rate. And in the new rate, it'd be thirty-one thousand something, it'd be a few hundred, you know, a few thousand dollars less for them. So, their valuation is pretty comparable to the international code council rate structure. Other developers, I'm not sure how they value their building, but the ICC basically uses commercial, I guess, more, more reasonable building costs. And this, uh, the commercial rate is based on a hundred and sixty-seven dollars a square foot, which, uh, in this day and age, I can tell you, in, in our, a gas building, we're looking at probably between a hundred and seventy-five to two hundred dollars square foot, possibly for building costs. So, it's still, you know, the one sixty-seven is more reasonable for actual cost structure, you know, for a few days' dollars to build a house, or build a commercial building.
And to follow up on that, we will get you all kinds of examples in the next meeting.
Okay, perfect. Any discussion or questions for staff at this point?
Well, I mean, the main thing is, I think we learned in the work session, it's, it's a whole new formula. It's a whole new process. Uh, so for the software, I think, after seeing some more examples, I think, we might be more aligned than we think we are, or than the one portrays. So, thank you.
Okay. Again, and just for, I couldn't remember, when was the last time we changed the formula? Was it 2005?
Uh, 2005, yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Mayor, I've got a question.
Sure.
Dan or Randy, I'm not sure. Here, when someone comes to have their project reviewed, everyone comes to the table, is that correct?
Well, for a building permit, if you were talking about these,
Yes, sir.
What happens is we take their valuation, they give us what they think they have.
She's talking about the construction.
The commercial side, the, the process, they do bring plans, the building on.
And that doesn't happen everywhere, I guess is my point. We're trying to make it easy, uh, for a person with a project.
Yeah, no, our, our process is for commercial, industrial, and subdivision development. When you come to the city and want to get a permit and have to submit plans, we actually sit you down at the table with all the city departments, other utilities, and soil erosion people and everybody. So, when you're going over your plan, everybody is at that initial table, so you can knock out all of your issues, or schedule follow-ups with the particular departments or individuals you want. Now, I will say, not all of the non-city utilities take advantage of it all the times, but they do participate, if, when they consider a project worth their while to participate. The county also, whenever a project is, um, kept, served by county water or sewer, or there's a county road involved, they always participate on, at the table, and they're there at all those meetings with us.
And that just doesn't happen everywhere.
No, it happens, uh, basically, I can tell you from all the people I've represented, it happens nowhere else. I mean, I'll just be honest with you.
But we're, we're trying to make it easy.
Normally, normally, if I have to go get permits or plans approved for a client or something, I end up having to go to eight or nine places within that particular local government. And then, I in addition, have to go meet with each of the utilities separately. Hey, I make money on it. I don't complain, but, you know.
Well, and I think, Mayor, apples to apples is to look at some of the comps, if they have impact fees or not, too. I mean, that, that's another.
Yeah, and the, and the information we got does include taking into account the, the impact fees, which of course, we've, we set back to zero back in, uh, oh-eight or oh-nine. And have kept them at zero since then. So, I, again, I look forward to getting more information on different categories, so council gets more comps, so we could come to a, a good, uh, healthy decision two weeks from tonight. All right. Anybody else for Dan or any other staff? Thank you, Dan. Uh, on that one, again, we'll take this up for final consideration at our, uh, meeting on June the, what is it, two weeks from tonight? The fifteenth? Thank you.
The next item, Mayor.
Next item, yes, please.
I'm sorry, the Callex G-PON system for fiber distribution. As I mentioned in the work session, this piece of equipment, basically, we have fiber strands that, uh, some of the, when we first put up fiber, there's only twelve, twelve strands in the, in there. Some of the newer ones are sixty-four strand, but basically, there's some areas like Old Mill Road where we're out of fiber count. This piece of equipment technologically has improved, basically, to a thirty-five thousand dollar item. We put, um, it allow that one, one, one of those twelve strands to go up to thirty-two fibers. So, it's adding capacity to our lines, more service we can sell. And I recommend approval of this purchase of thirty-four thousand nine ninety from Callex.
Any questions for Dan on this item? If there are none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue on, please, Dan.
Yes, Mayor, this is for the construction manager at risk for the gas department building and the recreation pond on Old Mill Road. It's being proposed, working with Pond and Company Architect. We've, uh, this construction manager will allow us to continue on this process and move it forward with the building, uh, plans. Balfour Beatty is a recommended company we're looking at. We went through a review process with the review committee, evaluating the proposal, and then looked at their fee structure. Basically, uh, it was narrowed down to, to the top two firms. We interviewed those firms, and then we still selected Balfour Beatty as the company. Again, if you recall, a few years ago, when we did the public safety building, the construction manager at risk allows us to play a part and make sure we use a lot of local subcontractors, 'cause they'll bid the job basically in pieces, and allow us to break that up till we get, allow smaller firms to bid on that project rather than bring in their own, um, workers and do the job. So, recommendation is Balfour Beatty. Up on the screen, you can see the, the fee structure. What we're doing is bringing them on now to work with Architect, so we can work out the design issues, uh, now before we get too far along with, in the process with Architect. That's the pre-construction fee of twenty-two thousand in the proposal. The construction fee they're proposing is three point two-five percent on the cost of the building, whatever it determines, you know, whatever that final number at, end up being. I did speak to, uh, Richard Collins from Balfour Beatty. They're looking at probably between six to seven million dollars, what they're anticipating, based on the information they have. Obviously, they've not seen the architectural plans, they only had the rendering that we had. But we'll work with them and Pond and Company, the Architect, to make sure that we bring in, uh, a building that the council approves and, and meets, uh, the specification. So, that number, you know, is just the estimate at this point in time. The other fee that we'll end up paying is estimated, uh, the maximum amount of construction is a two-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand eight thirty-one. Is their, that's their cost for their labor and overhead, and then the three point two-five percent. So, the bottom number on this sheet says the estimated construction cost of seven million. So, you take the pre-construction of twenty-two thousand, three point two-five percent of seven million, plus the, the two-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand eight thirty-one. So, we're looking at five-hundred-and-forty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars as estimated cost for Balfour Beatty. You can see Reeves Youngs would have been seven four, seven forty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six thousand for Ajax, or nine hundred and seven thousand would have been, Wobak Lewis and Smith at a seven million dollar building. Again, we didn't select the lowest, we selected the ones that we felt, you know, Balfour Beatty would do the job, has respectability, has done this work in the past. So, that's the recommendation to the city council, was Balfour Beatty for the construction manager at risk. And that, uh, if approved, as I mentioned in the work session, it'd be subject to the city attorney reviewing the contract for the mayor and city clerk to sign that agreement.
And you used the committee on this, who was on?
Uh, Tamara Brock, Gary Riggs, Michael Dixon, Michael Hill, and Brian Friary, and, and Bill Trott as well, from the garage.
So, we have more than one head looking at it.
Questions or discussion? If there's none, a motion would be in order. Motion to approve. Second.
Subject to the approval of the attorney.
Exactly.
You are the attorney, are you not?
I am, I am, I am. There's not somebody on the spot like that.
And you, and you seconded in the process?
I do the same thing.
Good catch, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dan. Uh, Mr. Riner, you got the next couple here. Actually, the next three.
Honorable Mayor and Council, first reading of ordinance for the amendment to utility ordinance regarding the water and sewer rates. The proposed fiscal year two thousand seventeen, eighteen budget includes a couple of increases. First increase is a seven and a half percent increase to the residential water and sewer rates. And the second increase is a seven and a half percent increase to the basic water, uh, monthly water and sewer rate. The seven and a half percent increase will allow the water department to continue the maintenance of the current and existing sewer, water and sewer system, as well as update and expand any future growth. For the residential customers, the water and sewer rate increase equates to sixty-one cents for one hundred cubic feet used by the city residents, and a dollar and twelve cents for one hundred cubic feet used for the outside, the city residents. Total estimated increase for the residential water and sewer customer is four dollars and nine cents per month, and that's based on seventy-five hundred gallons consumed. The water and sewer, uh, also, uh, proposing a seven and a half percent increase in the base water, monthly, uh, water, uh, monthly water and sewer rates. Current, uh, base rate is eight dollars and eighteen cents. The proposed rate will go to eight dollars and seven nine cents. This is equates to a sixty-one cents per month increase.
Okay. And again, this is the first reading, and we'll vote on this on the fifteenth. Any questions for Tom or for Bob?
Just pointing out to you that we've got the comparables up on the board. The two bars on the left are city current, city proposed. And you can see they're still below all the, uh, other ones that we compared to. And granted, this is a seven and a half percent increase, but it still puts us below, uh, most of those. The reason for, I would remind you, we've been talking about this for years. There's a five-year cost of about forty million dollars. It's broken into twenty for the existing system, and twenty for the environmental. The environmental piece is an unfounded federal mandate. The ten-year cost on both of those is ninety million dollars. So, we're into the second year, I think, of the multiple-year process that has us doing, doing those things.
Good point. Any other question or discussion? All right, Tommy, if you'll please take on the next item.
I think I'll start, please.
Okay, thank you, Sam, go ahead. This is the budget ordinance.
Okay, we, uh, this is a stripped-down version of the, uh, presentation that you all saw at the work session. To start it off, uh, kinda hit on the seven things that, uh, are important to Cartersville that we see in our surveying and our strategic planning. Public, local-owned public utilities, a diverse and healthy business space, thriving downtown, vital neighborhoods, ample parks and green space, and a, and a, high-quality independent school system. From that, you can see, uh, council goals, and these are integrated into the budget. Uh, ones that are important to council, it's so important that they included them in sixteen and seventeen, are of course, the water improvements that I just talked about in the previous item. Uh, code enforcement at the motels, where we've got an additional code enforcement officer in the budget to help with the, not only that work, but the, all the usual stuff that they do. Uh, revitalization and land bank. Technically, that's not a budget item, but we do have staff working to complete that work on, uh, assessing the blighted and vacant properties. And we need to do the organizational work up front, uh, before we can begin to work on those. Next one, or these are carryovers from two thousand sixteen. The permanent property for the gas department, Dan referenced that under the, uh, construction manager at risk. Uh, comprehensive security assessment for city buildings. We'll see some additional work downstairs on customer service. We've already done some out in front of the old post office with the installation of the bollards. Development of the two thousand twenty list, uh, we've got several updates of those that have circulated to y'all, and we've got a newer one that I'll be sending to you. Automated meter reading is a two thousand seventeen goal. The beginning for, the beginning year for that is included in the budget. Uh, the review of personnel benefits, we've got a two and a half percent across-the-board increase. Uh, also, mention to you that we're working on updating codes, regulations, et cetera, and that we will bring those to you in a workshop setting. The, real quick, those are the goals and strategic, uh, things that we're looking at. If you hear nothing else that I talk about tonight, hear this. If you look page eleven in your budget, the reason for the increase in the budget is the gas and the water work. It's the line to Transco, it's the building of the gas HQ, it's the beginning of the, uh, extensive work to the existing system and the environmental mandates from the federal government that we are trying to find. Real quick, and take it away.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor and Council, before I get started with my portion of the budget presentation, I'd like to take this time to, uh, thank the department heads for all their help. Uh, without them, I couldn't have, uh, actually put this budget together and got it back in balance. First slide indicates, uh, that we do have a balance, well, it doesn't so balance, but we have an increase of ten million eight hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. This equates to a six point nine-two percent increase from last fiscal year budget. Positives of, of the proposed budget, there's no property tax increase. It continues the ten-year capital plan. There's no increase or decrease to the transfers to the general fund and the water, gas, and electric funds. It incorporates the goals from your visiting session. And there is funding of major capital improvements in gas, water, and parks. This is a comparison by fund. I'll, I'll point out some of the bigger changes. In the electric fund, we've got a nine-hundred thousand dollar decrease. This is a decrease due to, um, smaller purchase of electricity. And fiber optics is a four-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand dollar increase. This is due to the, uh, city purchasing the phone switch and other capital items. Uh, in the gas department, there's a, almost a four million dollar increase there. Again, that's due to, uh, cost of purchase gas, along with capital items. And the solid waste is a three-hundred-six thousand dollar increase there. And that's due to operating lease, uh, uh, payments, and also purchasing two vehicles. We usually typically only buy one vehicle. And the stormwater, there's a three-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollar increase. Again, uh, this is, goes to personnel increases and also capital items. And finally, in the water and sewer, there is nearly a seven million dollar increase there, and that major is all capital increase. Let's talk a little bit about personnel. There is an increase of six hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. And then, there's, there will be a net increase of four positions. We're gonna be adding a gas location tech, a code enforcement officer, an engineer, and an assistant fire chief. Salary increases across the board for everyone, uh, two and a half percent. There's an increase in healthcare costs, both to employers, to the employer, the city and employees. The, the estimated increase is right now sixteen percent. That can go up or can go down. Hopefully, it will go down. And we have pension plan contributions in the old plan. If you remember, we started two plans, a second plan, uh, the hybrid plan, uh, effective January the first of this year. The old plan, we are still, uh, contributing sixteen percent. And the new plan, we will be contributing eight and a half percent.
Before you move off of that, let me add, I sent some bullets to you all this afternoon. I didn't include the assistant fire chief. I knew that we had four and I included, included an IT person, while technically, there is an IT person in there with Lamar's passing and our replacement of that, that nets out at zero. I forgot the assistant fire chief. The assistant fire chief is for the last six months of the year.
Next slide shows the school appropriations. And there are some appropriations that have decreased estimated by two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. I did talk to the, uh, school personnel. They have indicated that they will try to keep their mileage rate at the same. However, it does depend on what, uh, financial responsibilities they have and what needs to have for their budget. Next slide, uh, we're gonna talk a little bit about the capital projects. As we've mentioned several times, the major improvements are in gas and water, and parks and recreation. And we'll be starting the new fire station number three. Uh, more than likely, we won't get too far in the construction, but we will be doing a lot of the, uh, engineering-type work. This slide is our, eh, outside agency history and funding for fiscal year two thousand eighteen. You can see that we've got, um, several areas that we've been contributing to. The economic development, uh, has a decrease this year of sixty-five hundred dollars. This is due to, uh, an email, uh, sent to me by, uh, economic development, uh, person, and she basically indicated that there, there will be an increase in the overall, uh, budget of what, of what they're looking for. So, our outside agency funding this year is seven hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars, down again, sixty-five hundred and forty dollars from last year. Our pie chart illustrates the, um, size of each fund in relationship to the overall budget size. You can see that the electric fund is a twen- nine percent, and that's the, the largest fund. Next largest is the general fund at twenty-four percent. Gas fund is third largest at twenty percent. And the water and sewer fund is sixteen percent, is the fourth largest. And this is pretty typical of how the annual budgets, uh, sizes go and pieces of the, of the chart. We've already mentioned the water and sewer rates, but I'll go over back, I'll go back over those again, the seven and a half percent.
We probably, we probably all over that.
All right, we'll go back over that one.
We don't wanna beat this one to death.
We'll skip that one, and we'll skip that one.
Yeah, there you go.
This is a list of, um, projects from the water and sewer, uh, department, and, and the way they will be funded. We'll have some, at the top of the list is through bonding, issuing bonds. The, the middle part, we'll have, we're gonna be using some reserves. The, uh, but towards the bottom, we're gonna be using actual revenues. We'll be using some sewer, uh, capa, capa, cap, sewer capacity fee, sorry. And we've actually got a small art grant that will be helping to fund part of the, also. Couple of pictures of some of the, uh, capital items we'll be doing. The, on the left-hand side is the, the law, the lagoon, if you will. This is where the water is sent to, to help kinda settle out some of the solids. You'll notice that it's kind of on the full side, it needs to be dredged. On the right-hand side is, uh, the high- On the right-hand side is the high service, there should be pumps, not pond. Those are the high-service pumps that will be replaced. Some of the, I think both of those are in the mid-20 to 30-year range.
One of them's old as Bob, right? Is it the bottom one that's old as you? Okay, you're two.
So the W.
Just a whippersnack.
This is the downtown water main replacement. The area in red will be the actual, what is going to be replaced. This is the Cook Street manhole project, the area in yellow. This is actually behind the sinkhole, or kind of in the sinkhole area. These manholes, I believe there will be a couple of them that will actually be eliminated. Mission Road sewer replacement project, the area in red is what will be the designated project. The areas in the yellow and orange, those are areas that have already been done, completed in the, in the past fiscal years. The West Avenue water main replacement, the area in red is the targeted project for this fiscal year 2018. And finally, we're going to talk a little bit on the TMDL project. I won't get into the specifics because I don't fully understand all the specifics, but for the, for the, for the biggest part is the, the areas in light blue, the filtration and the EQ, and the one large new FST, those are areas that we will, if we use the projected plan that we've kind of been studying, those are areas that will have to be added to the current process. And I believe those alone have about an $8 million price tag to them. Let's turn from the water and talk about the electric rates. You'll see that the red illustrates Georgia Power and the black is City of Cartersville. Residential summer rates, the illustration here is that the City of Cartersville is below Georgia Power. Residential winter, same thing. Red is the Georgia Power, black is City of Cartersville. Once again, we are below the Georgia Power. And finally, residential average, again, red is Georgia Power, black is City of Cartersville, and once again, we are below them for the average. Let's talk a little bit about the gas. We're going to be installing the Transco line. This is a second supply fee to the City of Cartersville from the gas department. It will provide the city with bargaining power in the rate cases. It will cost approximately $7 million, of which we plan on adding, issuing bonds to help cover the cost of this. And the capital improvement piece is already built into the structure, rate structures to cover the bond payments.
That's just the line we're going to have.
Less, the left of the screen is the construction, and the right indicates the line going from Gordon County in through Dalton, and then it continues on down in the middle part of Georgia. Talk a little bit about the gas facility. This is the architect's rendition, if you will. It's still not 100 percent. This is the final drawing or final looking of the, of the building.
We continue to work on ways to make that not look so boxy.
This is the overview of the piece of land that the new building will be going on. There is a retention pond to the left of the building, I believe will be actually, in a sense, a will to the, I wouldn't say will, but for lack of a better word, a will to the recreation for them to use, and I believe there will be a walking trail within that same area. And as far as the gas comparison for, to other vendors, at the top of the list, Cartersville gas is at $1.13 per therm. Again, this is for calendar year 2016. The next lowest vendor is the Constellation at $1.44 per therm. This slide represents the list of parks and recreation projects to be funded with, the GEO Park and Recreation Bonds. You'll see a couple of issues here. You'll see that $1.6 million is a grant that we've, we'll be receiving from the GDOT. That will be to help the completion of the Leek Mounds Trails. And second of all, the Dillinger Park, picnic shelter replacement, there's also a $100, $100,000 grant that will help us complete those, that, that particular part of the park also. These are pictures of completed buildings. On the left-hand side, the right-hand side is part of the new backstop, new fencing.
That's a new knee wall that you all approved, change order to increase the height on. These are buildings in various stages of construction. If you haven't been out and taken a look at it, Greg did look great.
Those are more buildings. On the left-hand side, you've got more, more, another building. On the right-hand side, you've got the two play areas that have been completed, and all this has been done with the Parks and Recreation Bond Fund.
We can probably roll on to conclusion. Let's roll through those two.
Okay.
We've already beat this one to death.
See, we're going to go through that one, that one. And in conclusion, the budget is a key policy vehicle to implement the council goals. There are increase, the increases reflect extensive capital projects in the water and gas and parks. There's transfers from the utility enterprise funds. They are steady, they do not increase or decrease. There is no increase or decrease to the property tax. Water rates and building permit fees are included, and as we always say, the city continues to supply high-quality services at cost at or below the marketplace.
Let me echo your thanks to the department heads and staff, and to thank you personally for all the endless hours you've spent on this. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I'll add thanks to everybody, too, including you.
There you go.
I know I ran through it kind of quickly tonight, but if anybody had any questions, feel free to ask me anytime during the, during the meeting or after the meeting.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You didn't mention the Aubrey Street Pool. I know it's closed.
Want to talk about that, Greg?
When it's 17.
We'll get Greg to talk to that.
Yes, Mayor and Council, and Calvin, the Aubrey Street Pool is part of a project that will be, hopefully will be going to bid in the next month. We've got the design and everything done for the bathhouse, and we're reviewing, we had a different architect do the design for the pool and, the pool and splash pad, and we're reviewing that now, and that will be, that will go out to bid at the same time that the buildings go out to bid. And that should be this summer, and our expectation is that it's completed and open for the season in 2018.
My only question is, and I understand that, but the condition that it is in now, it looks like it's condemned.
The Aubrey Street Pool?
Yeah, and I was thinking, do we have any signers there saying it's closed and will be open in 2018, or anything to?
We do not. Now, that's something we can, we can add, but at this time, we do not have.
What I'm saying, that would remind, that would remind the public in the community that it's, it's not condemned, it's not done away with, and it will reopen.
We do.
May I have something to hold for?
Yes.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
Any other questions relative to the budget ordinance for 17-18 at this point?
Just one, Mayor. Tom, if reserves are flat, if we're not increasing or decreasing transfer of reserves, will that money go into capital projects?
You're, you're talking apples and oranges.
Okay.
We're talking transfer of money between the funds and not reserves. Reserves have been steadily increasing probably for seven years. We are going to use some of that, we're going to use some of that in water, we're going to use some of that in gas. I think there's some in electric that we're possibly using for AMI, but you can't intermingle those, those are two separate things.
The point that was made in the budget presentation, if I'm going to say this correctly, if not correctly, please, Tom, but that the amount of money that's being transferred from those entities to the general fund are laying flat, which also means, since we didn't increase those, that whatever money is left in there, it gives them a little bit more latitude to plow those back into those capital projects.
That's correct. The significance of that, if that's where you're going, particularly in water, we decreased that last year, and that gave him more money to use in water, if that's what you're asking.
Yes.
Is it a dollar amount or is it a percentage?
Excuse me, for what?
Oh, the transfer amount?
Transfers are dollar amounts.
I said percentage.
We try to, we would try to link them to percentage, but if you get into doing that, you're probably going to be surprised by what some of the percentages are, and if you get into limiting it, you're not going to have enough money to run the rest of government. We try to limit those as much as we can, but city fathers, whenever a hundred years ago saw fit to set things up this way, so that's.
So it's not a percentage, it's a dollar amount?
Yeah, you could. Some of them, though, you can't equate to percentages, like electric is about 5 percent. Some of them are bigger.
Yeah. And that's really because the electric has a bigger budget than the other two.
Yeah, Don's got more money than anybody else.
Anyone else? Thank you, Tom. You have the, you have the next item as well, please.
You're welcome, Don.
Honorable Mayor and Council, we have a need for a couple of air conditioning units and customer service to be replaced. The two units, basically, one is straddling the 21-year age mark, and the other one is looking at 17 years of age. They haven't worked in the last month or so, and the customer service have, I won't say complain, but they've asked several times if I can get them replaced. We received quotes from three local vendors to replace the units. Local bidders are Weaver Heating and Air, Mike Jones Heating and Air, and Penley Heating and Air. Mike, I'm sorry, Weaver Heating and Air has the lowest bid at $7,400. However, his warranty is not quite as good as the next lowest bid. He has a one-year, one-year labor, one-year maintenance, and five years of all parts, while Mike Jones Heating and Air is at $7,600, and his warranty is 10-year all parts and five-year labor. For an extra $200, I would strongly recommend Mike Jones Heating and Air to replace the two units at $7,600.
If there is any discussion, and if there is none, the chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the bid from Mike Jones is the best bid.
Second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Mr. Reeves, you've got the next one.
Yes, Mayor, we need to get an odorizer for the Transco meter station, and the bid is $28,500.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions?
He's not talking about the breeze either.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Jones, final two, well, I'll have to add one, but the last two that are on the.
Good evening, everyone. I think up first is the belt press one and two rebuild. The belt presses, if you've been out to the plant, they are the final disposal step, if you will, for solids the plants generate. These bio solids are then taken out to agricultural fields and applied, and in the process, we squeeze the water out, and this machine is what does that to make the hauling more efficient. Presses one and two are approaching 26 years of age. They've had essentially breakdown maintenance in that time period, and not surprisingly, they are worn out. They have a multitude of moving parts. We requested a bid from the original equipment manufacturer who has been bought, but essentially, it's, it's the factory rep to come out and give us a full rebuild of these two units. It's a sole source bid because it is a specific brand and model of machine, so we have that one option. That quote, or that price was given to us was $45,861, and would recommend that for your approval.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, chair will entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Next up, this is related to the exact same piece of equipment we talked about in the work session. I think the easiest way to understand it is if you use an airplane analogy. What we just approved would be working on the airframe, the physical machine itself. What this item is, this would be similar to the avionics in a plane. It's, it's the brains of it, the control mechanisms. Those systems are the same age as the machines. They have not been changed since they were installed. These machines, like I said, they are de-watering machine. They work in a high humidity and closed area. All of the switches, the relays, the electronic components are corroded, and they're starting to fail. They're 20 years old themselves, and what we'd like to do is to update those control systems to a programmable, programmable logic controller, a PLC, bring all of the metrics and control systems up to a modern standard, improve control of the machine. We took bids for that work. We received two bids, one no bid. The low bid was Hero Electric for $32,510. Would recommend that for your approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion approved.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We do have one item to add to the agenda tonight. Chair will entertain a motion to add that item.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Item is added. Mr. Lovell.
Mayor, we recently had alcohol control board hearings with several establishments in the city who failed a sting operation and did sell to minors. One of those establishments, 2320 Highway 411, the Marathon, had filed an appeal to the mayor and council of the decision of the alcohol control board, but we did receive notice from their attorney today that they have dismissed that appeal. I would just note that for the record, and have provided Meredith a copy of the correspondence from their attorney to include in the minutes.
No action required by council on this item?
No.
Okay. Would you please instruct somebody? I'd like to see what those decisions, I think council probably would, too, to see what most, those.
Meredith has a list, and I'll check it for that to y'all.
Thank you. Yeah, if you could just send the council those businesses and what the alcohol control board find them with, or whatever the resolution of those were. I think, I think everybody in the council probably would want to at least see that information, so thank you very much for that.
Do you, do you not get the minutes from the alcohol control board?
I may have already got it, not seen it. If you want to call me out publicly, go ahead.
No, no, no. I'm just kidding.
We do get that, and I may have, I may have just not seen that.
I was just trying to.
I know, I know, I'm being silly. Any other businesses come for council this evening? Calvin, once again, welcome to the city council family.
Thank you.
And great to have you up here with us, and again, we will honor outgoing Councilman Lindsey McDaniel at a later date. Anyone else? There being none, chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Adjourned. Did not get her on.